When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
There's kind of these screeching noises You gotta know those screeching noises, there's fucking... I don't know There's gonna be some...
J'ai un super rôle pour toi, tu fumes tout le long.
Sérieusement, c'est pas un peu trop flagrant?
Justement, on veut que ça soit.
The angle of the camera, I don't know what it is.
Something's got a hold of me lately Oh, I don't know myself anymore Feels like the walls are all closing in And the devil's knocking at my door Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you? I'm no good at being alone
How many times did I tell you I'm no good?
It's taking a toll on me Trying my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones Don't you know? I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see?
I had my computer plugged into this.
Control
Blood that...
When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me Problematic Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you Yeah, I know I can do it on my own But I want that real fool Black magic and it takes two Problematic Problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict And I need some relief My skin in your teeth Can't see the forest through the trees Got me down on my knees, darling, please I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me I lose control When you're not next to me
When you're not here
I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me You're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
That last paragraph is not, but the last paragraph is... It's the paragraph on top of it Because this one says "when you're not next to me" This one don't have it
Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me Problematic Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you Yeah, I know I can do it on my own But I want that real fool Black magic and it takes two Problematic Problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict And I need some relief My skin in your teeth Can't see the forest through the trees Got me down on my knees, darling, please I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
Yes, I know I can do it on my own There's a lot of words right there They went right here, "when you're not next to..." "When you're not here with me" I don't even know Why are they stopping the tape? We're just reading Right? I do, I do know myself Give me some space, man! Problematic I have his heart to break when I'm with you Yeah, I know!
I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
It's not right here It's "when you're not here with me" It's "when you're not next to me" It's not right there, it's right here "When you're not next to me" Now he's saying it again "When you're not next to me" And it ends Because right here, there's no "when you're not next to me" "When you're not next to me" up here, see that? That's not down here "When you're not here with me"
Feels like the walls are all closing in And the devil's knocking at my door Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you? I'm no good at being alone It's taking a toll on me Trying my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones Don't you know? I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me Problematic Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you Yeah, I know I can do it on my own But I want that real fool Black magic and it takes two Problematic Problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict And I need some relief My skin in your teeth Can't see the forest through the trees Got me down on my knees, darling, please I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
This is... This is so... This is a mental break This is not even coming either, right?
I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me You're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
That's it right there How does this go on? It's like, what cameras going on? There's only one
Feels like the walls are closing in And the devil's knocking at my door Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you? I'm no good at being alone Yeah, it's taking a toll on me Trying my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones Don't you know? I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
Problematic Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit Bad habits hard to break But I know I can do it on my own But I want that real fool Black magic Oh man Going all the way right there
I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me You're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
I missed the song, I was just... Like, I got it You make a mess of me
Something's got a hold of me lately No, I don't know myself anymore Feels like the walls are closing in And the devil's knocking at my door Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you? I'm no good at being alone Yeah, it's taking a toll on me Trying my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones Don't you know? I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me Problematic Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you Yeah, I know I can do it on my own But I want that real fool Black magic and it takes two Problematic Problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict And I need some relief My skin in your teeth Can't see the forest through the trees Got me down on my knees, darling, please
I got it, I got it
I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me You're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
That's the end Woo! Oh, that's nice
Something's got a hold of me lately No, I don't know myself anymore Feels like the walls are closing in And the devil's knocking at my door Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you? I'm no good at being alone I'm... Yeah, it's taking a toll on me Trying my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones Don't you know? I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me
Problematic The problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit Bad habits hard to break Yeah, I know I can do it on my own But I want that real fool Black magic and it takes two Problematic The problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict And I need some relief My skin in your teeth Can't you see the forest through the trees? Down, on my knees
When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control When you're not next to me Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby You make a mess of me I lose control When you're not next to me I'm falling apart right in front of you Can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
That's real good. That took me right out of fucking the... No kids on that one, right off the bat. Bing! Yeah!
Something's got a hold of me lately, no I don't know myself.
Not like I do it on purpose.
Feels like the walls are all closing in and the devil's knocking at my door. Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you I'm no good at being alone?
I've been a student alone, I've been fucking alone for goddamn decades. That's weird, I should say.
I lose control when you're not next to me.
You're making me crazy.
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me. Problematic, the problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit. Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you. Yeah, I know I can do it on my own, but I want that real fool like magic, it takes two.
Maybe that great magic. I'm an addict. Dance to that like a minute ago, I'm like, what?
Can't see the forest through the trees, got me down on my knees, darling, please, oh. I lose control.
Honestly, it is, I'm gonna have to...
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control.
I got that one. My Elvis glasses, so there's no confusion. My Elvis. Just a good rock and roll legend, Elvis.
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see?
My phone went to the wrong side of the street. He wears some like... He got the sword, he liked walking on that. So there's like...
You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
There's some connections, there's some connections. We got an hour. Here we go, it's just, I'm gonna get fucked over there. And then that person too, I already know, I'm gonna have to figure it out when I get there.
Something's got a hold of me lately, no I don't know myself anymore. Feels like the walls are all closing in and the devil's knocking at my door. Whoa, out of my mind, how many times did I tell you I'm no good at being alone? Yeah, it's taking a toll on me, try my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones. Don't you know? I lose control when you're not next to me. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me. Problematic, the problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit. Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you. Yeah, I know I can do it on my own, but I want that real fool like magic, it takes two.
To be bad.
Problematic, the problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict. And I need some relief, my skin in your teeth, can't see the forest through the trees, got me down on my knees, darling, please, oh. I lose control when you're not next to me. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me.
Yeah, yeah, great. Alright, I get back for the 12th episode. We're going for the 21st episode. Alright, shoot. Start on that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we're at 11. Tell a Pikachu. We're at 11.
I lose control when you're not next to me.
This is falling apart right in front of you.
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
Should I get to the next song? Teddy's like Teddy swings. Why you swinging to Teddy? Nowhere. That's not fine. You knew it was coming. I got a name like Teddy, so why you swinging to Teddy, come on? Nowhere.
Something's got a hold of me lately, no I don't know myself anymore. Feels like the walls are all closing in and the devil's knocking at my door. Out of my mind, how many times did I tell you I'm no good at being alone?
What are you doing, nowhere, girl?
Try my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones. Don't you know? I lose control when you're not next to me. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me.
This is one game, we're gonna be right back again.
You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me. Problematic. Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit. Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you. Yeah, I know I can do it on my own, but I want that real fool like magic, it takes two. Problematic, the problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict. And I need some relief, my skin in your teeth, can't see the forest through the trees, got me down on my knees, darling, please, oh. I lose control.
Take that, all of them, this is my... Da-da-da-da-da. Da-da-da-da-da. Down!
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
Ah!
I lose control when you're not next to me. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me.
Give me to the King Charles.
You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
Just let that one go and get the next one. I'm going around in fucking three minutes, I can do it.
Something's got a hold of me lately, no I don't know myself anymore. Feels like the walls are all closing in and the devil's knocking at my door. Whoa, out of my mind, how many times did I tell you I'm no good at being alone?
Number 12.
Yeah, it's taking a toll on me, try my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones. Don't you know? I lose control when you're not next to me.
I realize.
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me. Problematic.
There we go.
Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit. Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you. Yeah, I know I can do it on my own, but I want that real fool like magic, it takes two. Problematic, the problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict. And I need some relief, my skin in your teeth, can't see the forest through the trees, got me down on my knees, darling, please, oh.
I need you, man. Oh, no. What's up, Charlie? Alright, timeout.
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me. I lose control.
I got my Elvis glasses.
When you're not next to me.
It's Versace's.
I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control.
The vibe, boy.
When you're not next to me. You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
They'll sell items. This one? I'm like, oh shit! That's my Elvis glasses, how much is this? Says, that's on sale, really? How much? She said, fucking... Thirty percent off, if I buy one, I get the second one fifty percent off. Today was on sale, usually? Yeah, I think it was... It was forty, fifty percent off on sale. It was like four hundred dollars. It was fifty percent off, so I got it like twenty percent off. And then the next class, I just come in at a percent off.
Don't you know? I lose control when you're not next to me. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control. When you're not next to me.
Total was like a hundred and seventy.
You're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me. Problematic.
I got my Elvis glasses.
Problem is I want your body like a fiend, like a bad habit. Bad habits hard to break when I'm with you. Yeah, I know I can do it on my own, but I want that real fool like magic, it takes two. Problematic, the problem is when I'm with you, I'm an addict. And I need some relief, my skin in your teeth, can't see the forest through the trees, got me down on my knees, darling, please, oh. I lose control when you're not next to me. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control when you're not next to me. Yeah, you're breaking my heart, baby, you make a mess of me.
You guys wanna pick out the second song? I'm already done with this. It's just the baby back ribs. You can't fucking say black magic. I might as well say tannic rituals and shit. Baby back ribs. When you're not next to me. I mean, I should skip. I'm falling apart right in front of you, can't you see? I lose control. What did you say? That was so fucking lit to this song, y'all. I mean, these people can read. Alright, I'm gonna be sober. They're like, genius, we didn't read the rest. It's alright, it's alright, it's alright, I'm here. I'm gonna let you know. I'm gonna create Elvis. I'm about to bust this first. Three hours of exclusive. Fuck Pikachu, he said it's okay, it's okay, everybody. Who doesn't paint their nose? One? Is there anyone that don't? You see what I'm saying? Everyone does. Come on. Outta my mind, how many times did I tell you? I'm no good at being alone. It's taking a toll on me. Trying my best to keep from tearing the skin off my bones. Don't you know? Problematic. When you're not next to me. We're gonna bust it. We're gonna bust it, y'all. Like, oh yes!